Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, November 18th, 2020 meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. If you would rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Jim Harris.
I am here.
Lucas Steele. Michael Gordon. Doug Hardy. Donald Bergen.
Here.
Dan McGowan.
Here.
Chad Nelson.
Here.
Susanna Ballard.
Here.
Matthew Mitchell. And Sam Levine.
Here.
Okay, seeing as we have a couple of vacancies, would Ms. Ballard and Mr. Levine via Zoom take the permanent positions here at the deus? Okay, the minutes of the last meeting, has everybody had a chance to read the minutes? Any additions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. We have a motion approved by Mr. Bergen, a second by Mr. Nelson. Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay, let's put it to a vote.
Sam Levine.
And how does Mr. Levine vote?
Sam Levine, we will need a voice. Thank you.
Aye.
Okay.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is correspondence and announcements. Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we have no correspondence or announcements at this time.
No correspondence or announcements. Okay, well then I guess we will move into the public hearing. Let me just first start by saying this is a public hearing and there is a structured order to this proceeding. The city staff will present each item. There will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that anyone in the public that wishes to speak limit their trips to the podium and microphone to one only, keep all comments to less than five minutes, and to stay on point and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing and bring the motion back to the table for city staff's recommendation, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove. The first item on today's agenda is item number ID 20-2584. It is a request for a text amendment to Title 14 of the zoning development code to renumber and modify Section 14.03.03(c) 17 Medical Marijuana Business to change the title to Marijuana Business, add subsection B Marijuana Establishments and Marijuana Testing Facilities, and add definitions to Section 14.06.03 definitions. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. To start off, the city attorney Kelly Gary would like to give a little bit of overview of the Smart and Safe Arizona Act, the recent ballot measure that was passed in the state. So without a turnover, Ms. Gary, thank you.
Good morning. I just wanted to go over some of the highlights of the act that was passed by the voters. It won't go into effect until it is certified by the governor. There's no specific time in which that must occur. Generally occurs around November 30th, but it could occur any time in December or even later than that. So we're not exactly sure when the measure will go into place, but sometime in the upcoming months it will go into place, and at that time marijuana will be able to be used in Arizona legally. It won't be able to be sold until the licenses have been issued, and we'll kind of go over some of those details now. But basically, the Smart and Safe Arizona Act, it legalizes the sale and adult use of marijuana within the state of Arizona. A license is necessary for it to be sold. The state is going to create rules to implement and enforce the act, very similar to what happened with medical marijuana. So we're awaiting those rules. We should be getting those shortly. They will start issuing the licenses first for those who hold medical or the medical marijuana dispensary licenses. They'll have an opportunity first to apply for a dual license. That'll be between January and March, and then after that it opens up to allow to accept other applications, and then there's a random process to select the licensees from that point in time. What's important and what we focus on here today is that the city, under the act, may only regulate as to the reasonable zoning regulations that limit the use of land for marijuana establishments and marijuana testing facilities. The city cannot enact any regulation that is more restrictive than a comparable regulation that applies to nonprofit medical marijuana dispensaries. So really important, we're only focused on today, the reasonable land use regulations that the city may implement. And so really simply, the city is recommending, or staff is recommending, that we adopt regulations that mirror what we do for the medical marijuana dispensaries. Luke was going to go through that in more detail. We talked a little bit about the dual licenses. Another important thing to point out is that, under the act, marijuana and marijuana products are tangible personal property, and they're subject to transactional or transaction privilege tax. However, the state and city cannot levy or collect any additional taxes of any kind on the sale of marijuana or marijuana products. We also cannot levy or collect any fees or assessments of any kind on marijuana or marijuana-related activities. So there's nothing further that we can even collect as far as taxes or as fees, other than what's established under the act. So unless there's any general questions, we can ask, you can ask those, of course, during the question and answer, but I'm going to turn it back over to Luke, and he's going to walk you through staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. Basically, what we're asking, what this item is, we're asking for a new code section, basically remunerating and existing medical regulations. You received the proposed track changes in your packet that show what we're proposing. It's basically establishing the very same land use regulations as are used for medical marijuana. We're adding basically a new section called Marijuana Recreational Marijuana Business. So that includes recreational marijuana businesses and testing facilities. And basically, we took the medical marijuana section, copied it, pasted it into a brand-new section that has a very similar name, has the same regulations, little tweaks here and there for changing some verbiage here and there. But basically, it's the same regulations as medical marijuana. And so that means the current restrictions for medical marijuana are shown here. The hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. There are separation requirements for medical marijuana. We're proposing these separation requirements, again, go for recreational marijuana, 1,000 feet from daycare facilities, 1,000 feet from other marijuana facility, and then 500 feet from any religious facility, any residential use or residential district, and then from any park, public recreation facility or playground, and then from 500 feet also from Arizona liquor license holders. So those are the same restrictions that we have for medical marijuana. Again, we're just proposing to use those same ones for the recreational marijuana. Now here's some of the new sections. There's, of course, definitions that go along with the new types of marijuana establishments. The first one's marijuana establishment. I won't necessarily read this all through, but it basically means a license, an entity licensed by the department to operate, selling marijuana, some off-site cultivation, and then some, a single off-site location where the products and packaging may be sold or sold, excuse me, off-site location where the license and many manufactured marijuana projects or products or packages and store the marijuana products, but which, from which the products may not be transferred or sold. So, and then the final one is marijuana testing facility, and that's because the state regulations require some sort of testing facility for those. So these are new definitions for marijuana establishment and marijuana testing facilities. This slide shows the current medical marijuana dispensary infusion facility table, medical marijuana cultivation. Those are existing uses that are allowed, and the use table shows that marijuana dispensary infusion facility is allowed in C2 and the light industrial zoning districts. And again, we're proposing that marijuana establishment and marijuana testing facility be allowed basically in the same zoning districts as dispensary or infusion, the medical marijuana. So those would be allowed in C2 and light industrial, and have the same separation requirements as medical marijuana. And then we have just the definitions, our current medical marijuana cultivation and medical marijuana dispensary definition, just here for reference. We're not proposing any changes to those. So again, to restate, we're proposing that medical marijuana, excuse me, recreational marijuana be allowed in the same locations as medical marijuana, with the same restrictions as far as separations from other types of uses. So that kind of begs the question, okay, in C2 and light industrial zoning, where are those zoning districts in the city? So starting at the north end of the city, by the shops at Lake Havasu, that's zone C2 and some C2 planned development. And then we come down a little further off of Chenoweth and Victoria Farms Road, there's some light industrial, which is the orange. So the red is C2 zoning, and the orange is light industrial zoning. And then we go a little farther down, Lowe's is C2, and then we come farther down Highway 95 till we get to the city proper. The large orange area here is an area of College Drive and Lake Havasu Avenue, all the way down Lake Havasu Avenue. This orange is light industrial, light industrial on the lake side of the highway, and then some C2 as you go farther south, down toward Country Shire Avenue and south of, yeah, south of Industrial Boulevard. Now, there are two existing medical marijuana facilities in the city right now, one in the area of Lake Havasu Avenue North, shown by the star location, and then another one down on Industrial Boulevard. So those locations are existing for medical marijuana. And then as we go a little farther south through town, on London Bridge Road, there are some areas that are zone C2, and then along Mesquite Avenue, there's some areas on C2. And then even farther south, at the south end of town, on Sweetwater Avenue, there's some properties on C2, and then there's a node of C2 at Jamaica Boulevard and Lake Havasu and McCulloch Boulevard North. A number of these properties, while they may have the proper zoning for this sort of use, their separation requirements come into play. So the 500 feet from certain types of uses and the 1,000 feet from other types of uses come into play. So one of those is 500 feet from residential zone property. So you'll notice that, let's say here on the Jamaica and Lake McCulloch Boulevard, across the Wash El Dorado Avenue, that is well within 500 feet of this zoning, C2, I mean, this, yeah, the C2 zoning. So these, quite frankly, there's no, there's no way those be allowed for that sort of use. And that falls, and a number of areas in town fall into that case where there's separation requirements, rendered some of these properties not able to be used as this type of use. And so with that, done with, concludes my presentation. Open any questions you may have. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff by commissioners? I've got several, but I'll go to Mr. Nelson first.
Okay, so basically, what I want to know, and kind of gear this towards those who may be watching this now or later, but the difference of where you can, you know, cultivate and grow the marijuana to the difference between where you can buy it. I think what, and Luke, you've done a great job at establishing where, where a facility could be, but basically what I want to know is the difference between where you're growing it and where you're selling it.
Well, at this point, I'm unaware of any locations in the city where people are growing medical marijuana. Medical marijuana cultivation facility is among the uses in our permitted uses table. It has the same restrictions that, as far as separation from other uses. It is allowed in agricultural preserve, that's one difference, because it's agricultural, I suppose. And then it's allowed with a conditional use permit in C2 and light industrial. So it has another layer of review in addition to the separation requirements for a medical marijuana cultivation facility. And again, that's not changing. That is the code we have already in place, so there's no change to that. So if your question is regarding cultivation, there's no changes. We're proposing the code would remain the same for that. The only changes is really are adding the medical marijuana, excuse me, the recreational marijuana section and having the same separation requirements as for medical marijuana.
Okay, and more of what I'm getting at is, you know, are you going to see this at, you know, what type of licenses are they going to have to have to, to sell marijuana products?
Well, that may be more of a question for Kelly. She's more familiar with that, with that section.
So the state, so the new act is specifically going to cover marijuana establishments and medical marijuana testing facilities. So those are the definitions that Luke had. Luke, do you want to go back a slide? Those are, they should be on your screen. Those are the definitions for those two different types of uses. So you'll see under marijuana establishments, they do allow single off-site cultivation location at which the license may cultivate marijuana, blah, and so on, so on, so on, but they may not be transferred or sold to consumers. And then below, you'll also see again where they can manufacture those products and package and store marijuana and marijuana products, but again, not to be transferred or sold to consumers. So you have to have, to have a marijuana establishment, you'll have to have a license from the state.
Okay.
So that, that'll be that process that they'll go through, starting in January. If you already currently have a medical marijuana dispensary license or license, then you will be able to apply for a medical marijuana, or for a marijuana establishment or marijuana testing facility license. And then you'll be able to locate in the city in those, those locations that Luke just went through.
So I guess either one of you could answer this question. What do they, what do they specifically do at a testing location?
I cannot answer that question, but I could, from the definition, it's where they're going to analyze the potency of marijuana and test marijuana for harmful contaminants. Now, through the act, if you're going to sell these products, then they must be tested. And so there's going to have to be more testing facilities throughout the state to test and certify your product. And so from my understanding and reading the act and reading that definition, those testing facilities are to provide those services to those who are selling the marijuana.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of staff? I've got a couple, two or three. Let me first start by asking for the record, why now? Why are we doing this now as opposed to, and maybe this is another question in tandem, as opposed to waiting a little bit till this thing has been digested and thought out a little bit further? And are there any other municipalities that you know of that are already enacting this type of?
Mr. Chair, I will address that if that's okay.
Go ahead.
So actually, many cities and towns started working on this several months ago, when we believed that it was, it was a possibility that this was going to pass. So there are municipalities that have already processed and passed laws that provide some sort of regulation. Obviously, we run very different from community to community. There are some communities that are obviously trying to prohibit it, and that's the direction that they're going. There'll be others that are like us, that are mirroring exactly the regulations that they have for medical marijuana, and there may be some that open it up a little bit more. So we do have some municipalities that have already taken this to their first steps, excuse me, in getting it approved or getting regulations on the books. The reason why we're processing it now, because the act was passed. So it's something that staff, we've been working on now for quite a while, and it passed. And so this is logically the next step for us now, to bring it forward and see where it goes. We're not sure what the pulse of the community is going to be on this issue. We've been very focused on other election issues. We've been very focused on COVID-related issues. This really hasn't been something that has been discussed much in public, just because I don't, I don't know why. I guess I can't answer that. But we need to find out what direction the community wants to go. If it's a different direction than what staff is proposing, then we need to get on that and get those regulations in place and get them before this board, and then also before council, so they can go into place before licenses start to be issued.
Okay, one last question. Should this be voted on and ratified here today? What is the potential, if down the road, the community wants to modify this at some point, can this be brought back?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I'm just asking this for the record.
Absolutely. Yes, so at this point in time, staff is recommending that we obviously mirror the medical marijuana. We know that that has worked well in our community. We see that working well for recreational marijuana as well. However, if we go forward in the future and the community decides, hey, we need a couple more locations, we'd like a couple more of these types of establishments to be able to locate within Lake Havasu City, it's as simple as bringing it back here. We'll start again here. We'll make those modifications to the development code, take it to council, and then enact it, if that's the desire of the community.
Okay, just wanted that clarification. Any other questions by commissioners of staff? Anything at all?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Levine has a question.
Hi.
Go ahead, Sam.
Can you hear me? I'm just curious what the, what the purpose is of those distance requirements, the 500 feet residential center for the marijuana businesses. Sorry if this is obvious, but why do we have those?
Your question is why the implementation of the 500-foot separation?
Correct.
Kelly, would you mind addressing that?
I don't mind, or Luke, can? We are, I mean, currently as stated, we are mirroring the same exact regulations that we have for medical marijuana. Those are the distance requirements that we have for those establishments. Those were determined to be appropriate for as far as spacing out the location of those activities from those other purposes or activities.
Yeah, no, I follow that we're just using the same guidelines that we already had for a new purpose, but my question is more global. Why, why do we, why do the, why do we have this distance rule which renders these areas zoning that would otherwise be compatible to these businesses, that renders them useless to this one industry?
Probably for the same reason that we have the liquor laws.
Yeah, I mean, some of it is mirrored off of what we have for alcohol establishments, and that's a state law that requires those types of distance requirements. I know in establishing what we have, we look to other communities, we look to other states to see what they've implemented and what they've done to provide some protections and some spacing. And so that's what we developed, and that's what we implemented, and it's worked very well for the medical marijuana establishments, and so we are recommending that those be followed here.
I guess I should clarify, I'm thinking specifically about cultivators. I'm not talking about, I can certainly see that the purpose is self-evident for the retail side of it, same with alcohol. But I, I'm just confused why we, what the concern is with people that are just producing a plant inside of a warehouse within a certain number of feet of a residential zone. Maybe something to consider for the future.
Sure. Specifically, under this act, under the marijuana establishments, they kind of lumped them all together. So it would be hard for us to have different establishments when the definition provides for those activities all together. So most likely what you're going to see is retail that also allows some cultivation, and so that makes it hard to separate out those distance requirements when we don't, we don't know necessarily what they're going to provide, and if they're allowed to provide that retail by law, it makes it difficult.
We couldn't, we couldn't create a subclassification for strictly cultivation that has no, you know, no foot traffic, where they could, I mean, I don't even know if it's a, if it, if there's a demand issue there, but I'm just thinking of people who might want to start businesses cultivating that will create jobs that might be locked out of doing so based on those specific details of the distance rule.
Yeah, I completely understand what you're asking. I just, the difficulty that I'm having just processing it in my mind is that the definition lumps them all together. If there was a definition that provided like a separate license for that activity, it would be far easier for us to then implement regulations that address that specifically, but because they are lumped together in that marijuana establishment definition.
And just so I'm clear, they're lumped together by the city or the state?
By the state. These are, this is the act, so not even the state. This is the voters that pass this initiative, and this is the definition contained in that, in that ballot, in that, in this act.
That clarifies that issue, that we have no control over that stuff. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, any other questions of staff by the commissioners? Hearing none, we will go to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward and state your name for the record. Is your, yeah, there you go.
Good morning. My name is Jack Dunn, D-U-N-N. I would like to commend the city for being proactive and getting a head start on implementing rules for recreational marijuana. However, I would ask that the commission postpone approving these rules at this time. The state has not written their rules yet, as we've heard, and I think they have until April. I was mistaken, is that what you said? And so to your question, Mr. Harris, I do not understand the urgency in passing this so quickly either, and I think there needs to be more conversations had around this topic. As Luke mentioned, kind of on the map, there are really not many locations here in town that allow these licenses to open. And now I do want to be clear that I totally understand the concerns the city may have of not wanting a site on every street corner, like we've heard about and seen in other recreational states. But I do believe there's some wiggle room between the strict guidelines that we have for a medical program and, you know, having one on every corner. And so I think why taking some time to look at loosening up some of these regulations would be a good idea. One, there is a limited number of licenses issued in the state, unlike our neighbors to the west and to the north, so just anybody can't open one up. There will be a finite number that, that can be opened. Two, there will be approximately, I want to say 130 to 160 licenses issued, like all over the state. So my opinion, as we saw on the map, Lake Havasu will have two, as they already exist, with a slight chance of potentially having a third. I believe the act states that there's only going to be 26 additional issued on top of the existing medical licenses. So 26 all over the state, for Havasu to get one is slim, in my opinion. And then there will be a tax, similar to alcohol and cigarettes that was mentioned. This excess tax will be 16%, and will fund public safety, community colleges, infrastructure, public health, and community programs. So I think this is a great opportunity to help our community and tuck them away in kind of these hard-to-find industrial areas, I think could hinder that. So in summary, I believe that removing some of these restrictions and taking some extra time to really take a closer look where these licenses can be located will be valuable to our community in the long run. Thank you for your time.
Okay, any questions of the speaker? By commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Before you do go.
Yes.
Let me just ask a question. You do understand that this can be modified down the road? Okay, and I wanted to make that, that clear on the record earlier, that should this go through as kind of a vehicle to get the thing started? If it needs to be, if the community decides that they want to do something a little different down the road, that's certainly possible.
Sure, I just, I just think it's worth taking a moment to kind of explore this a little bit further and, and kind of get it right from the get-go instead of jumping the gun, so to speak.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I've got a question of the applicant, just because he knows a lot more about this than most of us, and kind of want to bridge the gap between some of the questions that Sam was asking and how staff was responding. Currently, if someone was to be growing marijuana at their home, what are the regulations there?
To my knowledge, currently under the medical act, you can grow up to 12 plants for your personal consumption, not to have harvested and obtained more than two and a half ounces at one time. And able to grow, your residential location is supposed to be more than 25 miles be more than 25 miles away from an existing medical dispensary as the growth lies. So that's not to say that I couldn't grow your plants for you while I live in town and you live out in the Tules, it's kind of, but the new act, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody over the age of 21 can grow up to six plants, and they can have 12 per household, but still not to possess more than an ounce of marijuana.
But it can't be located within 25 miles of a facility?
That was for medical.
Yeah.
My understanding is that anybody now under this new act, no matter where they live, can grow six plants.
Okay.
Up to 12 per household.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, either pro or con? Anybody else? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion, bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends that Land Use Action Number 20-2584, amending Title 14, Zoning Development Code, to renumber and modify Section 140303(c)(17) Medical Marijuana Business, be forwarded to the City Council for approval. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions of staff by commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gary.
I just provide one quick clarification. So the audience asked for the city to postpone based on the state having to make rules, and it's very true that the state is going to be responsible for promulgating rules to implement and enforce the new act. However, those rules do not include anything that has to do with the land use regulation aspect. So the rules that they are going to promulgate have to do with licensing, processing of those licenses, they have to do with the security, tracking, testing, labeling, potency, and those types of things. But as far as land use regulation, we're not expecting to see any further rules or regulations from the state regarding that. It's very clear in the act what the city can and can't do with respect to the land use, and so there's no reason for us to wait until those rules are in place for the city to take action with respect to the land use regulations.
Since we are here at the table for discussion and/or a motion at this point, I'll just say that I think that this is kind of being proactive on the city's part, getting this thing in place and getting it ready, and if there are modifications to come down the road, we already have this vehicle in place to do that. So I kind of take the position that that's kind of a plus for the city. We're being proactive and getting it in place and ready to make modifications if necessary. So anybody, anybody else have any comments?
I have a few more questions.
Mr. Nelson.
Okay, so, thank you, you know, Mr. Dunn, for a little bit of education on that. So what I want to know is currently, like, right now, if someone were to be growing marijuana at their home, which this law will change that, where more people can do that, what are the city's laws and regulations? Like, if someone called Luke and said, hey, you need to red-tag this house because they're growing marijuana and they're not doing it properly, what is properly? Like, what...
What are the ramifications?
What ventilation do they have to have? What, do they have to have any electrical
From a land use standpoint, that's, our zoning regulations don't necessarily apply to someone's doing in their home. If they're doing something illegal in their home, that would be through law enforcement. So what's allowed per that act is allowed. What we're trying to do here is, from a land use perspective, make sure everyone's clear where this use is allowed from a retail aspect, from the recreational marijuana distribution, sales, growing, that sort of thing. That's what this is intended for. It's not, that's one small portion of the overall act.
I understand that.
That would be, fall under law enforcement, if my understanding, the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong.
So the city doesn't have any codes to where, if I'm growing it in my house in the spare bedroom, that there has to be any electrical ventilation, locking door requirement? So my kid could be playing at a house where the parents, you know, they run off and go grocery shopping, and the door's unlocked, and they can go in?
I don't know if the code gets that exact.
Yes. So the code doesn't go into those requirements, but the state rules do. So if you're eligible to grow under the medical marijuana, and I don't have that stuff with me, I'm sorry, I'm not focused on the medical marijuana aspect, but underneath those rules and regulations, you have to abide by the growing rules, and so that's where it talks about where it can be located, whether it has to be locked up. But as Mr. Dunn pointed out, if you have a dispensary, a marijuana dispensary within 25 miles of you, you're really not supposed to be growing it. You're supposed to be going to the dispensary and getting your medical marijuana from there. But come, as soon as this law, this new act is certified, it, all of that doesn't really matter anymore because anyone over the age of 21 is going to be able to grow up to six plants on their property. And we don't have, the city doesn't have the regulations for that, those specifics as far as where, how it has to be locked, ventilation, but the state will have rules for that.
Okay.
So that's not necessarily land use. Those aren't the land use regulations that we're allowed to promulgate.
But those are regulations that we could promulgate?
No.
No?
No.
That's what I want to know.
So under the act, that little tiny section under the act that talks about what the localities can do literally is about this big, in a 16-page document. So we're here today presenting what we can do.
I think that's important for everybody to know.
Yes, for people to know and understand.
It's important, you know, and the real estate aspect as far as disclosure, you know, you know, and whether, you know, people are doing it properly, you know, the public has to have that, they have to know those things. So...
Yeah.
Essentially, when this, what we're trying to do is be proactive, but when the state passes this law, any adult over the age of 21 will be able to grow six plants in their home.
Yes. In all honesty, these details are probably things people weren't considering or thinking about when they were voting on the act, as far as people growing it in their homes and what that really means, and so, but it's a part of it. It's part of the, it's part of the act, and it's a part of what will be allowed. And although I love the city being held as being proactive, I don't see us really as being proactive. We're just, we're staying on top of it. This act is going into effect within probably the next month. We're right where we need to be.
So let me ask this question too. If you are, let's say there are four adults in a home over the age of 21, does that mean that they can each grow six plants or a maximum of 12?
I believe it's up to 12, up to 12 in one household, if you have more than one adult.
Okay.
And if I might interject, Mr. Nelson, I don't really see this being, because this is becoming state law, I don't see this as becoming a disclosure issue, that you have to disclose, you know, from a real estate standpoint, through sales or whatever, that there's marijuana plants in the house. It's legal, so I don't see that happening.
Yeah, I mean, growing, if you're not doing it properly, you can severely damage the house to where you need to remove all the drywall and the ceiling and everything.
I think, I think that happens with methamphetamine and things like that, but the primary byproduct of growing marijuana plants is oxygen.
Well, you need water too.
Sure.
If you have a pipe break, that causes damage in a house.
I think we're kind of digressing here from the land issue.
Yeah, we're way far from land use regulation by the city.
I just wanted to point that out so that nobody would be worrying about fumes coming from their neighbor's house. It's just a plant. Just thought it was worth mentioning.
And the other thing that we need to keep in mind, we are a recommending body. We're just holding a hearing. We're not policymakers. We're going to recommend to the City Council what direction we feel they should go, so we're not really creating policy here. So I know everybody knows that, but just kind of stating that for the record.
Yeah, I don't want to create policy, but it's pretty evident that we don't know this law.
Well, I think we do.
We know, we know the law. We just don't know the ramifications that may occur from it. But we have really great experience. Obviously, there are other states that have legalized it before us, so we have some great resources to look upon and to learn from, and we are looking at those and we are learning from them.
Hence the ability to modify this as we go. But when this thing enacts in a month or so, we can hit the ground running.
And just for clarity, I wasn't trying to allittle the conversation about the pipes and the electrical. I completely agree that people need to do things safely, whatever they're doing. I just wanted to point out that it's not the same as having a meth lab next to your house or something like that.
And we're not even talking about meth labs.
No. Are there any other, is there any, is there any other discussion by commissioners on the item? Hearing none, we are at the table for a motion. Anybody?
I would make a motion that, and I know it may be unpopular, but I'd make a motion that we postpone this until the governor's action, and until we know a little bit more about it.
We have a motion to postpone? Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, we are at the table for discussion, and I'll start by saying that if we do postpone this, when do we revisit it? I mean, it's coming, and it's coming fast. We need to be able to accommodate.
Yeah, I don't, and I'll ask you to clarify your motion for me or to provide us some direction. All the governor is going to do is certify the act, so we won't have any, the governor isn't coming up with rules, so the Health Services Department is the one that's going to come up with the rules. But the governor just certifying the act, he's just certifying the act. So, I mean, it'll become official at that point in time, but...
He's certifying the act as written.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's no changes that the governor is going to have. It's just the formal process of certifying, and then it becomes law.
Okay, so he can't modify it?
No.
Okay.
I mean, not to my knowledge, no. I mean, it was, it was an initiative enacted and properly voted on, as far as I know at this point in time, by the voters, and it passed by a large margin. Nobody's anticipating, there's no, there's nothing coming forth saying that there's any changes that are planned or any issues that have arisen that would necessarily stop or change it in any way. So, I mean, this is the act. This is the law. This is what the voters voted on. They voted yes overwhelmingly. The rules that the state will come up with are just how the licenses are going to be processed and what those forms look like, and coming up with those rules within the parameters of the act, but the act itself is the law. And as I said earlier, with respect to what the city can and can't do, it is that one section. That's not going to change. It's not going to change by the governor certifying, and it's not going to change by the rules that are promulgated by the state. So we're going to be back here. I mean, if you postpone it, that's fine, but we're going to be back here with the exact same presentation to you. We might know at that time, hey, it's been certified, hey, we got the rules from the state, here they are, but it's not going to change the city's section as far as what we have the power to do. And that is only related to land regulations, land use regulations. So very, it's so very, very similar to what we did with the medical marijuana. You know, we had our very small window of what we could do, that's what we did. But we had no control over anything else. We have no control of the licenses, we have no control over any of the other aspects of it. It was just that small little window of the land use regulation.
So any other thoughts on the motion?
And we absolutely can. I mean, if you want to postpone it, that's fine. I mean, we would like some direction of what you want us to bring back, or you want to bring back the same thing.
I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, that we're asking the right questions, and, you know, not passing it in a 20-minute meeting, you know?
What are your concerns? What's concerning you? What do you feel like you don't have that you would like?
Well, I don't think we have a lot of community input, number one. That's my main concern, is, you know, we have this meeting, this is probably the first time that people are going to even think about it, talk about it. It's coming to their attention. And if we go ahead and pass it, most likely, if we pass it, City Council is just going to pass it on our recommendation, and that's my concern.
And here's, and I totally hear that concern, and I think that's a valid concern, but here, and that's exactly what we're thinking from staff, and that's why we're taking the most conservative stance that we possibly can. We can't prohibit because we allowed medical marijuana. So by the act, we can't be any more restrictive with the recreational marijuana than we were with the medical marijuana. So that is our whole reason for, okay, we're going to mirror exactly what we did with medical marijuana. That's the most that we can do. That is our starting point. We can't do any, we can't be any more restrictive than that by the act itself. So we're starting at, this is ground zero. And so this is our safest place to start, and we thought this was the safest place to start for the community, and it gives us somewhere to grow from. It gives us a place to start, a safe place to start, and then if it's determined that we need more locations or we want to open it up a little bit, we can absolutely do that through time, but we're not in a big hurry, just as you're saying, we're not in a big hurry just to open it up or start exploring other areas of the city because we don't know. There's a lot of unknown. So this is the safest course of action that we could possibly take.
So I got a question for Chad. So were you thinking with your motion that maybe we would be able to be more restrictive than what the city's proposing here? Is that what your thinking is?
Not really, but I think that, you know, this is going to change things for Lake Havasu City, and I have questions, you have questions, and there's not a lot of people that have gotten their opportunity to have their questions answered.
But at this point, you can't change it any more than what medical marijuana is, other than some of the aspects that the law allows with regards to being over 21, being able to grow, and up to 12 plants in a household, et cetera. Those are the only things that are going to change, but we're not going any further than what the medical marijuana was initially.
No, I understand that, but the public doesn't have a chance to ask questions of staff. And we've already learned a lot here today, number one, and I still, in the back of my mind, this is where my sticking point is, is that it hasn't been approved by the governor, and I know it doesn't make a difference, or that's, but it still, we don't have that stamp, so we're stamping it before the governor does.
You're recommending to council what land regulations should go into place. This won't go to council for another period of days, and it won't go into effect till another period of days of that. The longer we postpone that, the longer we're prolonging that process, which is fine, and we can do that. We're just trying to get everything in place.
Let me pose a hypothetical. If we don't have this in place prior to the law being enacted, what, I'm assuming January 1st or thereabouts, what are the ramifications?
We have some time. I mean, assuming that those dual licenses have an opportunity to submit and be processed between January and March, we have some time, assuming that those are, those are only going to be open to those who currently have a medical marijuana dispensary. So those, I'm assuming, will be for those exact same locations where they're at now. And they'll apply for those and go through that process. Come March is when the new applicants will be able to submit their applications and start going through the process. I think the benefit that we provide to anyone else who doesn't currently have a medical marijuana distribution or dispensary licenses, that we're telling them in Lake Havasu City, here are the requirements in Lake Havasu City, or here's the direction that the community is going. It's just providing as much information to those people as possible as they go through that process.
So if, for example, again, the hypothetical, if somebody obtained that license right away and was ready to open up a business, and we didn't have anything in place, what would their limitations be?
Currently, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a part of our code. It would be something that would be submitted, and the zoning administrator would be responsible for trying to figure out what to do with it. If the question came to me, I'd say we're going to fall back on the medical marijuana regulations and kind of process it that way, but they might have an argument that because we don't have anything in place, that wouldn't be appropriate. We're putting ourselves in a position that I wouldn't want to be in. If that scenario were to happen, I don't want to be in that position. That's exactly why we're going through the process, starting it now. And if, it's fine if we're going to, if there aren't major changes to what staff is recommending, we're going to be fine, and we can get through that process. But if we do want to explore other possibilities, if we're looking at different angles, that's going to take considerably more time. That's going to take considerable more output. That's why we're starting it right now, because if we start taking different directions, that's going to take a lot more... that's going to take a lot more time and effort to really figure out what's appropriate and what's not appropriate. As soon as you start moving stuff around, it starts touching other things.
Well, we only have six weeks till the first of the year.
Yes.
When this is
So I'm recommending the safest course of action is to put into place the most restrictive thing that we can right now, get that in place. And then if we need to change that, we can come back and change it. We can take as much time as we want. If we need six months to come back and really look at all of this and need to open it up, we can take the time and we can absolutely do that. But to get things in place right now, this is, this is the safest course of action.
Any further discussion by Commissioners on the motion? Anybody? I noticed that the applicant has raised his hand. Would you like to come back to the podium to contribute? You have to come back to the podium. State your name for the record again. Turn the microphone on.
Is it on?
I don't know, is it green?
I was just going to ask, when is the soonest in his proposed hypothetical that that could happen? Where someone could come to town and say, hey, I'm ready to apply?
I don't know. As far as just approaching the city or approaching the state?
Well, both. To be able to approach the city, they'd have to have a license through the state to apply for a location in your hypothetical situation. So I was just curious what that timeframe would potentially look like.
Yeah, I don't know how quickly everything will be processed, but possibly March. I mean, assuming that everything goes smoothly and everything is processing quickly through the state, possibly March, maybe April, maybe May, but somewhere in, somewhere in that timeframe.
Okay, so three to five months roughly? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dunn. All right. We have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? All right, let's call for the question.
So we need to go to our voting screens.
So let's, let's go for, let's go for clarification. A yea vote would be to deny this. To postpone this.
Is to postpone it. And, and I don't exactly know what that means and when we're postponing it too, but the motion as stated was to postpone it until the governor basically certifies it. I believe.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to postpone until the governor certifies. And a yea vote would be to postpone.
Nay.
Do you have a question, Mr. Levine?
No, I just said nay. I don't know if you're going to call my name. I don't have a button to vote with.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, let's do this one because we're having some trouble with the programming and doing this type of motion. Can we, we're going to do it by voice. Sorry. Sorry about that.
And I'll go last.
So a, a yea would be voting yes to postpone. Nay will be you are not voting to postpone it. And then we will come back to have further discussion if there's a nay.
Okay. Ms. Ballard?
Nay.
Mr. Nelson?
Yea.
Mr. McGowan?
Yea, yea, yea or nay?
Yes, nay. No, yes.
Yea.
Mr. Bergen? And Mr. Levine was a?
It was a, it was a nay. I, I don't choose to delay it.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Harris?
I would go with a nay.
So we have four nays and two yeses. So motion to postpone is not approved.
Okay, so at this point, we've taken no action.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Levine, say again.
Motion to approve.
You're making a, a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve by Mr. Levine.
Okay, before, before we second it, can I just, Mr., can, is it, okay, so are you making a motion to recommend approval with staff's recommendations to the City Council?
Yeah, to go back to the original thing we were voting on.
Okay.
To say yes to the new verbiage.
No.
Well, not a nay. He's making a new motion. I just want to, so, so in your, in your packets, just as a note, we do provide like a suggested motion. That's really, really helpful.
Yep.
So that's, I'm sorry. I just wanted, before we seconded and went any further, I wanted to clarify the motion so we don't have to come back and redo it. So motion on the table. Sorry.
Okay.
So, Mr. Levine, clarification of your motion.
Yeah, my motion was to, was to approve the, the new rule. And, and finish the matter, send it to the City Council.
Are you approving with staff recommendations?
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve with staff recommendations by Mr. Levine.
Honestly, I'm not 100% sure what that means when you say with staff recommendations. I'm just saying that the, the new rules you guys sent me for the, for this meeting, I'm motioning that we vote to approve them.
Let me, let me clarify by reading staff's recommendations. Staff recommends that Land Use Action Number 20-2584, amending Title 14, Zoning Development Code, to renumber and modify Section 14.03.03(c)(17) medical marijuana business be forwarded to the City Council for approval.
Yes.
So that is what Mr. Levine's motion is. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Ballard. So we have a motion on the floor to approve this, this item with staff's recommendations by Mr. Levine and a second by Ms. Ballard. Any further discussion on this issue? Okay, then let's call for the question. I presume we have to do a verbal vote again.
This time I can do.
This time you can do the, okay, go back to your screens.
I'm going to have to go verbal?
Yes, you're going to have to go verbal.
Yea.
Motion passes 5 to 1.
Okay. So I'm going to say, you might not think so, but congratulations going forward. I think that's a good thing for you.
Hopefully it's a good thing for the city.
At this point in the agenda, we have a call to the public. If there's anybody in the public that wishes to speak on any item whatsoever, not just this agenda item, now is the time to do it. We may not respond as a Commissioner, but we can hear your, your complaint or, or comments. Anybody? I'll close the call to the public. Future meetings, Mr. Morris.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. December 2nd meeting has been canceled. We have no items for there. The next scheduled meeting will be December 16th and we will have that meeting. We do have items for that meeting. Thank you.
All right. With no further business, meeting adjourned.